Good evening. Thank you for coming. I would like to call to order the Board of Commissioners' regular meeting. It is Wednesday, August fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, six P. M. City Attorney, would you please lead us in the invocation and pledge of allegiance?
Your Honor, my Father, we come to you today asking your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of this community. Fill us with your grace as we make decisions that might affect the residents of the city of Madeira Beach, and continue to remind us that all we do here today, all that we accomplish, is for the betterment of the city of Madeira Beach. In this, we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Brooks, here.
Vice Mayor Taglerini, here.
Commissioner Kerr, here. Commissioner McGinn, here. Commissioner Gobaye, here. All are present.
Next on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Sorry, I'm getting strangled. Commissioner Gobaye?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Taglerini?
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Mayor Brooks?
Yes.
The motion carried five to zero.
There are no proclamations or presentations this evening, so we will move on to public comment. Public comment participation is encouraged. If you are addressing the commission, step to the podium and state your name and address for the record and the organization or group you represent. Please limit your comments to five minutes and do not include any topic on the agenda. Public comment on agenda items will be allowed when they come up. If you would like someone at the city to follow up on a comment or question made at the meeting, you may fill out a comment card with the contact information and give it to the city manager. Comment cards are available at the back table in the commission chambers. Completing a comment card is not mandatory. For any quasi-judicial public hearings that might be on the agenda, an affected person may become a party to a quasi-judicial proceeding and can be entitled to present evidence at the hearing, including the sworn testimony of witnesses and relevant exhibits and other documentary evidence, and to cross-examine all witnesses by filing a notice of intent to be a party with the community development director no less than five days prior to the hearing. Do we have any public comment? Please.
Good evening. My name is Nathan Broomer. My address is at twenty-six thirty Miriam Street South in Gulfport. I'm here this evening just to introduce myself. I'm on your ballot November fifth. I'm a candidate for State House in this district, District sixty-one, and I've made an intention to visit every city council or city commission meeting I can in the district. I've grown up in the area, never been fortunate enough to live here, but I've come to this beach many times over my fifty years living in the area and have enjoyed seeing it grow and develop. But I'm here to listen and to learn how you all work and what those most important issues are to you, and hopefully we'll have a chance to speak with you all at some time in the next few months. But thank you.
Any additional public comment?
But, Mayor, Commissioners, I'm Jeff Baggins, four twenty-nine Boca Seaga Drive. Just speaking as a resident today, one of the things I'd love to see the city look a little harder into is the legal short-term rentals that are going around, and I think they're becoming more rampant, and I think it's degrading some of the areas around, the places that are not zoned for it are doing it, and I think there's opportunities that we can look in for harder enforcements and kind of keeping the, preserving the residential nature of certain areas. So I just wanted to say that and see if it can come up on someone's radar and just kind of take a look and see what we can do to kind of make it painful for those who break the rules, maybe look at adjusting the rules or doing some things to kind of keep the residential areas residential and keep the tourists where they're supposed to be according to the zoning. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Do we have any additional public comment? With no more public comment, we will move on to approval of the minutes. If everyone has had the opportunity to review the minutes, do we have a motion to approve?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
There are the, there are three meetings that we have the minutes. Would you want them all in one vote or separately?
They can all be in one.
One, okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Gobaye?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Taglerini?
Yes.
Mayor Brooks?
Yes.
The motion carried five to zero.
We have nothing on the consent agenda, so we will move to public hearings. A, ABP two thousand and twenty-four oh four, Dick's Last Resort, and I will hand this over to our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a quasi-judicial proceeding, so I want to go through the process as required by our code. First of all, a summary of the application. The applicant for ABP two thousand and twenty-four dash zero four is requesting authorization from the Board of Commissioners for the approval of a four C O P alcoholic beverage license for the sale of beer, wine, and liquor for consumption on premises at Dick's Last Resort Restaurant at one-eleven Boardwalk Place West, Suite two oh three, here in the Madeira Beach. The standards to be applied tonight for this application are the standards that are standards that are set forth in Section one-ten dash five thirty-two. Those factors are as follows. Number one, the extent to which the location and the extent to which the proposed alcoholic beverage request will adversely affect the character of the existing neighborhood. Number two, the extent to which the traffic generated as a result of the location of the proposed alcoholic beverage request will create congestion or present a safety hazard. Number three, whether or not the proposed use is compatible with the particular location for which it is proposed. Number four, whether or not the proposed use will adversely affect the public safety. And the last criteria is that no application for review under this section shall be considered until the applicant has paid in full any outstanding charges, fees, interest, fines, or penalties owed by the applicant to the city under any section of the code. The burden of proof that you will apply tonight is set forth in Section two dash ten A of the code, and I'm going to read that to you. The applicant shall have the burden of proof at the hearing to show by the greater weight of the evidence that the application is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan and complies with all procedural requirements of law. Conditions may be suggested by the applicant, the city, or any party, or may be imposed by the board, which are intended to assure consistency and compliance. The parties tonight are only two. We have no affected parties that have filed notices of intent, so the parties are the city of Madeira Beach and the applicant, D L R Madeira Beach LLC. The order of presentation would be normally for the applicant to go forward. I'm not sure if the applicant is prepared to do that, and I'm seeing that she is. I'll introduce that attorney in just a moment. I want to read the quasi-judicial proceeds, procedures that we're going to follow tonight. This is a quasi-judicial proceeding where the Board of Commissioners acts in a quasi-judicial rather than a legislative capacity. At this hearing, it's not the board's function to make law, but rather to apply law that has already been established. In a quasi-judicial hearing, the board is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at this hearing and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the Code of Ordinances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The board may only consider the evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent substantial and relevant to the issues. If the competent substantial and relevant evidence at this hearing demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established in the Code of Ordinances, then the board is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent substantial and relevant evidence at this hearing demonstrates that the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the Code of Ordinances, then the board is required by law to find against the applicant. At this point, I need to ask you, each of the commissioners, whether or not there have been any expert communications or conflicts of interest that need to be disclosed. I'm seeing none. At this time, I need to swear in the witnesses that are going to be speaking tonight. So anyone that is going to speak, if you could stand up, raise your right hand, I want to swear you under oath. You swear that the testimony you're about to give is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Okay, thank you. So we're going to have the applicant proceed. We did get a request for public comment, it looks like, from Amanda Hossain. Did I pronounce it correctly? I believe that she is the attorney representing the applicant in this matter, so we'll have her go ahead and begin. That will be immediately followed by the city's presentation, and then it'll be back to the commission for consideration. So Amanda, if you could introduce yourself and make your presentation.
Good evening. My name is Amanda Hossain. I am located at one-nineteen South Monroe Street in Tallahassee, Florida. I'm here today on behalf of D L R Madeira Beach LLC. They are doing business as Dick's Last Resort. They are looking to be located at one-one-one Boardwalk Place, Suite two oh three. They are replacing a restaurant use that was currently there, and they will be assuming the restaurant space. As you are aware, a restaurant is a permitted use for this subject property. The alcohol license that's being sought is a four C O P S F S, which is a special food service license for restaurants only. That makes sure that the restaurant only incurs fifty-one percent of food and beverage sales, and alcoholic beverage sales must be less than fifty-one percent, and they will get regularly audited by the Division of Alcohol and Tobacco to ensure that consistency, as well as they must have at least a hundred and twenty seats. And this restaurant will have seventy-six seats inside and forty-four seats outside. The restaurant also will apply and be consistent with all of the requirements under the Code of Ordinances for this use. There's no expected nuisance or increase in parking needs or increase in traffic to be generated as it's a compatible use. There's currently a restaurant there. I'm here for any questions that you may have, and thank you for your time this evening.
Any questions for the applicant? Not seeing any. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And Joe, are you handling this presentation tonight? If you could introduce yourself and go ahead and proceed with your presentation.
My name is Joseph Batragli. I work for the Planning and Zoning Department of Madeira Beach, be presenting this alcoholic beverage permit application. Briefly going through the criteria in the city of Madeira Beach, land, reimbursement regulations. And just so we're clear, this will be taking, the new restaurant will be taking the place of previous John's Past Grill, if you know where that is, and they also had the same type of alcoholic beverage permitted. The extent to which the location and the extent to which the proposed alcoholic beverage request will adversely affect the character of the neighborhood. Permitting Dick's Last Resort to add beer, wine, and liquor to the menu for consumption on premises should not affect the character of the neighborhood. The existing neighborhood is mostly commercial uses and various other businesses in the same area already serve alcohol. John's Past Grill, which was the previous tenant of the suite, had the same four C O P alcoholic beverage license, which was permitted through A B P two thousand and twenty-two dash zero two in September of two thousand and twenty-two, and also was expanded to the neighboring unit through A B P two thousand and twenty-three dash zero five. Additionally, the applicant is aware of the noise ordinance in the city of Madeira Beach, and they agree to that the character of the existing neighborhood will not be adversely affected. Filing number two, that the extent to which traffic generated as a result of the location of the proposed alcoholic beverage request will create congestion or present a safety hazard. Dick's Last Resort will be in a walkable part of the city, and approving the restaurant to serve beer, wine, and liquor should not negatively affect traffic or present a safety hazard. Dick's Last Resort has a parking agreement with John's Past Plaza, formerly known as John's Past Parking Garage, as indicated in their lease and verified by email from the parking lot owner included as part of this agenda packet. John's Past Grill had the same parking lot agreement and stated a similar number of seats on their alcohol beverage permit applications. Therefore, the traffic generated shouldn't be significantly more than the previous restaurant that was at this location. Filing number three, whether or not the proposed use is compatible with the particular location for which it's proposed. This proposed alcoholic use is compatible with the location. Restaurants are a permitted use within the zoning district. Any distance requirements of Section one-ten dash five thirty or other section of the Madeira Beach Municipal Code would be met by this restaurant serving alcohol. Criteria four, whether or not the proposed use will adversely affect public safety. Public safety should not be adversely affected by Dick's Last Resort serving beer, wine, and liquor for consumption on premises. There, there are businesses nearby that already sell alcohol, and Dick's Last Resort has other locations within the state that also have similar alcoholic beverage permits through the state. Criteria five, no application for review under this section shall be considered until the applicant has paid in full any outstanding charges, fees, interests, fines, or penalties owed to the city. The applicant does not have any outstanding fines, penalties owed to the city under any section of our code. So staff recommends the approval of the alcohol permit application. And then within the agenda packet, we have their local application, their state application, email clarifying from the applicant to city staff, the number of seats and their noise hours, confirmation of their parking agreement with John's Past Parking Garage, which is from the owner, the property owner's written approval of the application, agent authorized notarization, notarized affidavit form, and the public notice, mailing, and posting.
Are you asking for the, that information to be received into evidence?
Yes.
Okay. Anything further you wanted to present tonight?
No.
Okay, thank you. Amanda, do you have any cross-examination of the city's witness? Okay. All right. Is there a summary that you would like to give, or are you satisfied with your presentation? Okay. Does the city want to summarize, or are you satisfied with your presentation?
We're satisfied.
Okay. So, Mayor, it's back to the, well, let me ask you, let me make one more thing. Anybody else in the public want to speak on this agenda item that did not raise their hand earlier? Okay. So it's back to the commission or consideration of this application? So it'd be a motion to approve, and then you would vote it up or down?
Do we have any comment or a motion?
I move, we approve A P B two thousand and twenty-four oh four for Dick's Last Resort.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Vice Mayor Taglerini?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Gobaye?
Yes.
Mayor Brooks?
Yes.
The motion carried five to zero.
Thank you. We can move on to the next agenda item.
Thank you. Our next agenda item is ordinance two thousand and twenty-four dash zero eight, fences.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll go ahead and read that ordinance by title only. This is ordinance two thousand and twenty-four dash zero eight, an ordinance of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending Chapter one-ten zoning, Article six, supplementary district regulations, Division three, landscape, fences, gates, hedges, and walls of the city's land development code to provide further information on definitions and applicability of division to include the vision triangle, amend front, side, and rear yards, and include fences around swing pools and location and height of fences, hedges, and walls, and add a non-conformity section providing for conflict, providing codification and severability, and providing for an effective date. This is the second and final reading of this ordinance. The first reading was on July tenth, and I would note that some revisions have been made to the ordinance, and they're discussed in the staff memo since the first reading.
Does the staff have any presentation on this?
Yes. So starting on page seventy of the agenda packet, there have been two changes since we brought this last time, which I'll highlight as I go through all the changes one more time. So starting on page seventy-eight is where the ordinance begins on the agenda packet. And the first change is with the definitions. This was already approved at the last meeting, but just going through it, we are going to be starting using the building line definition when it comes to fence heights. And that would be defined by the less restrictive between the building setback in the zoning district or the structure based on whichever would allow encroach further. And we'll go back into that again one more time when we get into the height. One of the two changes that we made from the last hearing is the definition of grade, which we discussed adding of the higher side. And what this means is when there's two properties, if there's a fence being put up along a property line, if there's two properties with different grade elevations, adding this will allow us to measure the height from the higher side of those two sides, which is how the Florida Building Code recognizes for swimming pool fences. Next change is number two, building permits required. We just want to outline that you don't need a permit to, for a temporary construction fencing that would be part of the actual building permit. You don't need a separate fence permit for that, so we're just outlining that. Next would be four and five, separating the opening requirements. Also, this was approved in the last meeting, but just to go over it again, where we had a lot of pre-manufactured fences that didn't meet the open fence criteria of the current code, so this is a little bit less restrictive with the opening sizes. And it also separates requirements for all fences and then fences that have to be opened, such as fences that are on open water bodies above three feet. We don't require, we don't allow a fence taller than three feet unless it's open. It can be up to four feet, as an example, so it would have to meet the open fence criteria. Another change that was already approved in the last meeting is just restating another section of the code where fence is not allowed if it blocks an intersection visibility triangle, which is if you're near an intersection, we don't want fences being put up that are going to block people's view trying to make a turn. That already exists in our code, it's just highlighting it in the, yes. It's limited to three feet in height within the intersection visibility, three feet or less. And then we get into height. So none of, just to go, just to reiterate from last meeting, none, this is, was already approved from last meeting, no changes have been made to this section, and no proposed changes are being made to the allowable heights. But what is being proposed is where the yards start, because certain yards have different requirements for fence heights, such as a side yard, you can be up to six feet, while the front yard, you can only be up to three or four feet, depending on the type of the fence. So this redefines what exactly the front yard is versus the side yard, which previously wasn't defined. So we're doing that by referencing that building line definition, which I spoke about earlier. And then also, we're allowing fences up to six feet adjacent to sewage lift stations. We're adding city pocket parks, because that wasn't previously there, along residential lines that are adjacent to commercial uses. We're also adding in our fence code a reference to swimming pool fences, Florida Building Code, and our pool code of the land development regulations already require at least a four-foot fence around a swimming pool, but that's not mentioned anywhere in our fence code. So someone that's looking for, to put up a fence might not know that, so we're just putting these requirements here. And there was, last time, we brought this up in the last meeting, there was a question about whether a fence is required on a seawall for, if there's a pool facing an open water body. We looked into that and can confirm that it's not required, and therefore, we added the last sentence in number one. So this was the second change from the last meeting. So there were two changes since we approved, since it was approved last meeting. One was that, the, what I mentioned earlier, and then this was the second change, adding this second sent, this last sentence here, that fences are not required to be installed parallel to the seawall for properties directly abutting water bodies, just to make that clear. And then there was also a question last meeting on if a wing wall is required, which, if you're not familiar with that is, it's a part of the fence that hangs over the seawall, say, on the side property line. We did confirm that is, would be allowed, but it's not required. And the final change, again, this was already in the last meeting, but is adding a non-conforming section stating that all fences, once you pull a permit, have to meet this code. Typically, other types of structures are allowed to continue a non-conforming use, but for fences, we wanted to make it clear that all fences have to follow this code once a permit is pulled. And that's all that changes if anyone has any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment? Having no public comment, Commissioners, do you have any questions?
I have a question about the, on page seventy-eight, if the furthest vertical structure member of the primary structure on the subject property, it gets a little confusing there. So what you're saying is, if it's six-foot requirement on the side of the house, but it's only three foot in the back, that vertical, if it's, let's call it ten, ten-foot spans in between vertical members, are you saying that the, as you go from the front of the house to the, down the line, if the back of the corner of the house, you splits that ten-foot section, then the next vertical member, support member, would have to be at six foot? Is that correct?
So the vertical member that's referenced in this section is talking about the vertical member of the structure, not the fence? And it's a little bit weird the way we had to word it, because we wanted to make sure we're including all different types of scenarios, but that's the vertical structural member of the primary structure. So typically, on a residential, there would be the house.
But it's still the same question. It's not really, so as you, which, if it's, it's three foot in the backyard, but six foot on the side yard, you don't split it in the middle of a ten-foot span, you split it at one or the other pole, what is, is that designated in here?
If so, if, assuming the structure is built beyond the setback, so we're, we're going by the structural member of the primary structure, then it would be the furthest part of the structure is where the fence height would have to drop. Does that answer your question?
No, I'm a little dense, I'm sorry.
So what we find is houses that were not built to the proper rear setback, and let's say they encroach into it. What we're trying to say is you, your six-foot fence can either run the length of your building line or has to meet the setback requirement, whichever is least restrictive. So if you happen to have a home that was built years ago and encroaching in the rear setback, you will be able to put a six-foot fence along there, but that six foot immediately has to drop to three, however you transition it, once you pass that structure.
Again, like I say, if you have, if it's a ten-foot in-between vertical post, fence post.
Yep.
And the six-foot would carry on until the next post, and then you would drop down.
No, you have to design it such that, at, once you hit the corner of that house, it's three feet.
That post had to be right there.
That has to be three feet. Well, what we find typically is the six-foot posts will be right here, and then they transition, and by the time it hits the rear of the property, it's transitioned down, or we see them stop flush at six feet, and then drop down to three feet.
Okay, but that post has to be right there at the corner of the structure.
Correct, you would have to have the post for the transition, or, like I said, the transition happens prior to reaching the back of it, that by the time you're at the back of the structure, it's dropped down to three feet.
Is that, is that clear in here?
We did the best we could, if you want to offer any, a different wording, we're up for it, we did go back and forth on it, Jenny.
I, I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, I would say that it's clear. It's also how we've been doing fences since I've been around, since before my time. Joe has Google Maps, if, that might be a little bit more clear.
Okay, so that ten-foot span, you would have to break it, in that scenario, you'd have to break it into a five-foot span of six foot.
Or, or they could just drop it at the previous post that's already on the side yard, because the six-foot height, that's just a maximum, it doesn't mean the fence has to be six feet height. So whatever, whoever the fence contractor and the owner, whatever they want to decide, but whatever they decide, they would have to either split it up so that it's not six feet beyond the, past the structure, or it'll have to drop before it gets there with the previous post.
Right, and if you have a pool in your yard, it has to be a minimum four feet everywhere.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any more comments from the commission?
No, thank you.
Do we have a motion?
I move we approve ordinance twenty-two-four-oh-eight.
And a second?
I'll second.
City Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Vice Mayor Taglerini?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Gabay?
Yes.
Commissioner McGeeon?
Yes.
Mayor Brooks?
Yes.
The motion carries five to zero.
Next on the agenda is ordinance twenty-two-four-zero-nine, Appendix D, Johns Pass Village Activity Center Development Standards. Now hand this to the city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor, this is ordinance twenty-two-four-zero-nine, an ordinance of the city of Madera Beach, Florida, amending the code of ordinances of the city of Madera Beach to adopt Appendix D, to establish the Johns Pass Village Activity Center Development Standards, providing that said standards shall regulate development in the Johns Pass Village District, providing for permitted accessory and special exception uses, providing for building site area requirements, providing for setback requirements, providing for residential, vacation rental, and temporary lodging use density, providing for maximum building height, providing for maximum floor area ratio, providing for impervious surface ratio, providing for alternative temporary lodging use standards, providing for design standards and guidelines, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. That was the first reading of ordinance twenty-two-four-zero-nine by title only.
And I'm not sure, is Jenny gonna, you gonna present that one?
Yes, I'll present. So, in March, March thirteenth of this year, both ordinance twenty-two-three-one and twenty-two-three-zero-two were adopted, and that amended Johns Pass Village Activity Center Plan, as well as amending the future land use map of Johns Pass Village Activity Center, to create the activity center that we know of as Johns Pass Village Activity Center area. So within one year, we have to update our land development regulations, what we typically think of as zoning. So you will see four ordinances in your packet tonight, this is the first one. Ordinance twenty-two-four-zero-nine creates an appendix, and that's what starts on page eighty-six of your packets tonight. And within this ordinance, you are, we are creating a new appendix that has all the development standards for Johns Pass Village Activity Center. So we have those six character districts that we've discussed previously for the past few years, and then all the development standards that are in the special area plan, that were also adopted into your comprehensive plan, as well as the countywide plan. You can see these six character districts on page eighty-eight, it's also on the screen there. So we can just go through this, and then, if you have any questions, we've seen this draft go before BOC at workshops, previous workshops, and it went to the Planning Commission on August fifth, and was recommended approval from the Planning Commission unanimously. And then also in your packets, we've been working with the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Commission, or Council, so on page one-oh-eight of your packet, they put together some visuals to help the public, this will not be adopted, just a supporting document, and we can go through that as well, just to show you setbacks, heights, permitted uses. We may just show that, that might be a better representation. Thank you, Andrew. So here is how the height is calculated. So it's from design flood elevation to the eve line of the building, if it's a flat roof to the top of the flat roof. So here we have design flood elevation, which is four feet above the base flood elevation, and that is dependent on your flood insurance rate map, your firm. Here's the setbacks.
Can you, I'm sorry, may I ask questions about the height?
Yes, we can, we can go into the height.
Or is that, or were you alluding to that down the road?
That, so this is a supporting document, but it might be better to go to the actual language for the height.
Okay, so, so the, is the height measured from DFE or from the ground?
It's measured from DFE.
Which is, BFE?
Yes.
Okay, so, so it goes to the rooftop, if the, if the rooftop is flat?
Yes.
Now, if we have hip roof?
And then it's to the eve line.
Still to the eve line, it doesn't matter if it's a hip roof or?
Yes.
So, all right, so if it's flat roof, then you may have parapet walls, and you may have like the elevator shaft, and stairwells, and so forth and so on, how is that, how does that play into these height calculations?
We do have a section in the code, so do you mind bringing that up? There's certain, certain things that can exceed the height.
Okay.
Which is like your mechanical units. Give us just a minute. Scroll down. I think it's at the very end of that section, let's see.
Are you made?
Yeah. If you want to.
Yep, so in section one-ten-four-thirty, we have height regulations, and subpart B is permitted exception to height regulations, are chimneys, cooling towers, elevators, stairways, protective railings, gas tanks, steeples, water towers, ornamental towers, or spires, amateur radio towers, and necessary mechanical opportunances may be erected as, to their height in accordance with the existing or heretofore adopted ordinances of the municipality, provided no tower other than a church spire or such communication tower of a public building shall exceed twenty feet above the maximum allowable building height limit, or twenty feet above the main building roof. And it kind of goes on with some other stuff, but it, for the most part, it's twenty feet above the height limitation, can't exceed, it can't exceed twenty feet, more than twenty feet above the height limitation.
But does that also include pergolas?
Pergolas or anything like that are not mentioned. Like I said, it's more like the chimneys, cooling towers, elevators, bulkheads, fire towers, stairways, protective railings, gas tanks, steeples, water towers, ornamental towers. Yeah, I'm not seeing any reference to like a pergola or anything of that nature, like an accessory structure of a sort.
One thing the Planning Commission adopted in their motion is we did add the language for stories, which kind of, so basically with height, you'd be regulated from the feet from DFE to the eve line, and then the number of stories. So for example, if you have more than half, half an acre in the commercial core, you get fifty-five feet from DFE, but it's restricted to four stories over one story of ground floor commercial, so potentially five, five stories from grade, but that kind of keeps things lim, limited in, like, two ways with the feet and, and the number of stories allowed.
Are you pretty determined on adding the number of stories to what's allowable for height? Is that something that you have to have in?
I think so, since we, it was recommended to measure to the eve line, to assure that there's no hidden stories, say, within, like a mansored roof, or a gabled roof with dormers, just making sure that it's very clear that these are the maximum amount of stories.
Thank you.
And those were based off of the master plan back in two thousand and two as well, you referenced that.
Typically, you know, height is height, and then you have density that you try to adhere to, and you, sometimes developers like to squeeze, but height is really what mostly matters, not necessarily the number of stories.
Yeah, so this is, measuring to the eve line provides a little bit of flexibility, a little encouragement to have those, like, hipped or gabled roofs that you see with the press metal standing seam roofs down there. But then flat roofs are also allowed, it could be, it is appropriate in some areas, architecturally, in your more traditional Main Street areas, so in the traditional village area, we see more of the flat roofs. So it just gives a little bit of variety and, and variation in the, in the roof.
Undulation.
So going back to the new Appendix D, it really outlines what's in the special area plan that was approved back in March, with the permitted uses, accessory uses, and the special exception use, the one thing that we've added, and you'll see this in a few different other ordinances later on and throughout the night, for special exception uses, they have to go to the special magistrate, the open rooftop use, if commercial use or accessible to more than one temporary lodging, vacation rental, or residential unit, you'll see that in the special exception uses, and we would like to carry that throughout the city.
Excuse me, Jenny, can I just ask a question about that? So, the special exception uses, did you, did I understand you to say, anything listed there must go before a magistrate?
Yes, that is correct. And then there's ten criteria that staff reviews, and the special magistrate will review in making that determination. It'll also be a public hearing, and neighbors will be notified via mail about the hearing as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And let's go, ninety-four. Okay, and we just discussed a little bit of the height, and then the temporary residential, vacation rental, and temporary lodging use density, this mirrors the special area plan that was approved. Same for the floor area ratio, impervious surface ratio, and then the alternative temporary lodging use standards. One thing, if using the alternative temporary lodging use standards, the applicant would have to conform to all design standards and guidelines.
Oh, Jenny, quick, as far as floor area ratio versus density, which is units an acre? So floor area ratio is merely for commercial, right? Or do you also?
So in, in activity centers in the county, it's an all-inclusive FAR, so it's for all uses. I, I know it's kind of confusing, because later on in the night, when we look at the C-three, C-four, and our three zoning districts, those are the proportional ones, where it'll say like, like, commercial or non-residential use for the FAR, but in the Johns Festival Activity Center, every, everything's going to be an all-inclusive FAR, so you're going to be regulated with the density and, and everything that will be, including commercial space, will be in the FAR, which is kind of unique.
Density and intensity. And then, remember, if you use that alternative temporary lodging use standard, you have to count the structured garage as well, within the floor area ratio, and that's from the county. Just a little different than how you typically would. And then here in section D-one-thirteen is the design standards and guidelines. So the design standards are required. All the guidelines are just guidelines of what we would like to see in the area. Now, if, if anybody is applying for a PD zoning, they would have to adhere to all the standards and guidelines in this section, as well as if anybody is applying for the alternative temporary lodging use standards. And that is Appendix D, so that is all that we have in this ordinance. And like I stated before, there is, there are visuals from Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council, starting on one-oh-eight of the packet, and that's just a supporting document, that's not, that will not be adopted within the code, it's just something to support, something that is a little easier to digest and see as the general public. So there you have the Boardwalk District. Commercial Core, the heights, setbacks. Is that the Johns Pass Resort Character District? That is the low-intensity mixed-use character district, so Pelican, the traditional village. And then the transitional district. All right, that is all I have.
Do we have any public comment?
Good evening, everybody, John Connolly, Normandy Road. I heard you ask a question that a flat roof would be, what, forty-four feet total? In Johns Pass, is that? What is the, what is your finished height?
John, this is just make statement?
Public comment.
Public comment, not question and answer.
All right, I wanted, all right. So what I'm basically getting at? So what I'm basically getting at is, so everybody understands this. If we have a height of 44 feet plus mechanicals, meaning air conditioning, elevators, what have you, why can't we come up to a finished 60 foot or 54 feet and make that common for everything? So, but that doesn't mean that because it's now going up to 60 feet, that you can build a 60 feet. We're still at, basically what I understand is 44 feet plus mechanicals. So everybody kind of like understands the finished height of all the buildings? Otherwise, the layperson doesn't understand that. In other words, the flat roof is 44 feet and then you add mechanicals, but it's not 44 feet anymore. It's the mechanicals, plus the mechanicals, I should say.
Do we have any additional public comment? With no more public comment, commissioners?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make a comment that last time we discussed this, I had specifically asked for a few items to be included in the Transitional Zone requirements, and I met with the department and with Mr. Gavai, they told me this isn't really the place for it to go. So I'm telling you this now because on our agenda setting, the item I, alcohol noise and special events, I'd like, we need to address those in that ordinance because it's not addressed in this. This is specifically for the Transitional Zone, which starts at 131st, goes to 133rd. It's mostly multifamily dwellings, hotels, there's the business cantina, right? Just, just to, I'd, to acknowledge the, the uniqueness of that zone, all right? So that's all, I just wanted to bring that out. That's, that's why that agenda setting is there, because it's not addressed in this ordinance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
To follow Commissioner Gavai's comment on parapet walls and pergolas on page 101 in the design guidelines, the letter F, the last one there, gabled roofs with dormers are encouraged. Perhaps that might be a section where you could either state about the parapet walls or flat roofs and make the flat roof a little bit more clear. As I mentioned prior, in my mind, I'm looking at the eve as the saint, as the ceiling height of the highest occupied space. So I don't want to beat that to death, but if there's any word smithing that that encourages.
One thing that might, might help if, on page 94 of the packet, which is Section D 108, maximum building height that we were discussing internally after the Planning Commission meeting is including, let me go to it on the screen. Or something that might help with, with that language would be, here we go. The following maximum building heights are measured from design flood elevation in the Johns Pass Village District to the eve line of the building or highest point of a flat roof. So that could be something that if was motioned tonight, we could add.
Well, to his, to his point, the highest point of the flat roof would not, that would include the roof, not the parapet walls. That's more of a aesthetic. And it would be used, it would be used for, you know, sightlines to, so that you did not see mechanical equipment on the roof. But it's, they shouldn't be penalized in height because they wanted to use that parapet wall to, to hide mechanical equipment or whatever that is on the roof there.
Yes, and then in the design standards, so those have to be adhered to. So Section D 113, Baron 1A, any new, new mechanical units, including heating, ventilation, air conditioning equipment, and exhaust and supply fans shall be located in a visually inconspicuous area of a building such as shielded on a roof and not visible or shielded from the public right of way. So those would have to be shielded and not visible, anything new.
Okay, I do have another question. Further in the packet, I think it mentions the floor area ratio, the max in the commercial core is 2.0, is that correct?
I would have to look at that to double check. Yes, printed on page 97, Section D 110, maximum FAR, commercial core is 2.0.
Okay, so if you have a commercial core 2.0 of, a far of 2.0, how do you reach four stories over ground floor commercial?
That depends on the design of the building. If you use alternative temporary lodging use standards, we'd have to count the garage. If not, then the garage would not be counted in the floor area ratio.
Okay, but even at, even at four stories, if you're not counting, well, no, I'll go back, if it's, if it's temporary lodging, you have to have commercial space on the
On the ground floor. In commercial core, yes, you have to have commercial on the ground floor.
So we're not talking about parking, we're not using it as parking, it's commercial.
Yes, now you could have a small, smaller commercial, like retail, like shops on the ground floor and then parking behind that, and then maybe the second floor part of it could be parking and that wouldn't be counted. Really depends on the design and the size of the lot.
But you're stating that we're looking at four stories, five stories tall. With a 2.0, that means it would be less than 50% of the buildable area, is that correct?
I think it would be important to remember that not every inch of the lot would, would be built over and there'd be open areas that wouldn't be counting towards the floor area, like these, like veranda areas and, or, and then some buildings of, in certain character districts, we do require step backs above a certain height, like for example, in, in the Johns Pass Resort, above the third floor, these have to be stepped back. So it ends up being because of some of these open areas and that there are setbacks and step backs, the, the two ends up encompassing every, everything down there. Because we looked at existing FARs too, of existing structures of similar height and scale, so the, so the two encompassed and worked for everything down there.
You're saying patios don't, are not, it's only air conditioned space that's calculated into the FAR?
No, it's gross. Gross is, based on gross, you determine floor area ratio. And floor area ratio and density are state and, and county regulated, so we need to make sure we are, we're not going above what they are requiring.
Yes, and those are the, that's the floor area ratio that was also approved in the special area plan.
Right. I'm not, I'm not arguing the FAR, I'm not, I'm just, I, I have a little heartburn. I, I asked previously why a quarter acre lot is, is at one height and a half acre lot is another height, and above a half acre lot is even another height. I never really got an answer at the workshop. It was more an explanation that we're gonna, you know, there's gonna be requirements for setbacks. But I didn't get a real response or I didn't understand why it was, why wouldn't they all be 55? Why wouldn't they all be 34?
We, I guess from previous feedback, we wanted to make sure that we reduce the bulk of the height of the buildings to make it less imposing, so the, so for example, why we, for the 55 feet, we require half an acre, so you can do the step backs. So from the street level, it doesn't feel as tall of a building. So it was kind of to reduce the scale of the buildings a bit and make it more pedestrian friendly and walkable.
Do we have the measurements to the existing eve heights now? We have any idea?
To, what, what was measured on our walkthrough, the highest one in the commercial core was 44 to the eve.
Was that from grade? That was from grade?
Like, yes, grade.
Okay, so assuming, what do we want to assume, an eight, eight foot grade? Seven foot grade?
No, it's probably four.
Yes, four foot grade?
Probably three to five.
You'd basically take 10 foot off of that. So the highest was 34 feet above BFE. Is that reasonable?
I mean, I mean, the parking structure down there is, is a six floor parking structure.
I'm not talking, I want to exclude the parking structure. I'm talking about, we're, I want to, in my mind, we're going to build buildings down there that are going to, as part of, another part of the code was it to have the fishing village feel. I, that's, that drawing that's on the board right now, that's on the monitor right now, in my mind, I'm just seeing that as a, as problematic as far as the fishing village. We have to be careful that this is an activity center and not a hotel center. I mean, I, I embrace an opportunity to, to rebuild Johns Pass Village, I just want to do it the right way. And, you know, to, to meet the 60 units per acre, or if they go to a alternate temporary lodging and, and go through the, you know, the hoops, I under, I understand and embrace that. I want every, I want it to be a win-win, but I don't, I don't want my neighbors to say, you ruined Johns Pass Village. That's, that was, that was where, you know, we love to attend. Our guests come to town, we go, we go down and we have dinner. I don't want it to become the Johns Pass Resort area where it's just temporary lodging or condos or it has, I, I want it to be a reason that people from Reddington Beach come down and, and spend their money. Enjoy the water. So I'm, you know, I, I still feel like this should have come back to another workshop after the Planning Commission had their opportunity to look at and make comments. You know, we're, we're being asked to vote on this tonight, I'm not sure we're ready to. And it's, and it's mainly that, I mean, I'm, I'm just looking at the FAR, how, how can you, how can you meet the maximum FAR and also the, meet the height and, and build something that's reasonable? I'm, in my mind, I'm not pulling it together. Maybe I'm missing something.
I agree with you. I agree with you. I think, I think the staff has done a wonderful job and they are so advanced.
Absolutely.
Yeah, you know.
I'm not throwing stones.
And to the public, and we need to slow down a little bit to, to describe and explain things to public as we move forward. So, yeah, I think.
I want to.
Another round of workshop may be in order, in my opinion as well.
Yes, I also agree with that. One more future meeting, and they have done a great job. I think it's just important that the, the Deer Beach residents know also, and we're all together on this. There's no reason why we should rush this through right now.
So I disagree. I feel like we've had, I couldn't even, I could not count how many meetings we've had on this subject, how many public meetings we've had between inviting the public in, Planning Commission meetings, City Commission meetings, discussions, one-on-ones, to be able to ask the questions, to understand. And when I read through the packet this week, I was very excited to see design standards because that is really what's going to keep Johns Pass Village, Johns Pass Village. And currently, there are none. There are no design standards really for anyone to have to follow if they wanted to build a hotel or a condo or retail building or what have you. And until we adopt some design standards for property owners to build by, I mean, we can keep pushing it to vote, but we've sat up here and had, had exhaustive conversations. The public has come and has given lots of input. I came to most of the workshops that the public came to, I missed one or two, but they gave input and the, the Community Development Department, they took that input and that's how we got where we are today, is from the input from the public. No one came here tonight to speak on this topic. We've had public comment, there's no one here that thinks there's something wrong with this tonight. And I just really felt like, when I read through it, that number one, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to approve this and send it to us. So it's not just being vetted by us, the Planning Department, the community that's come and given their input, our Planning Commission voted on this and they had multiple meetings. And the design standards that are in Section D 113, those are the standards that are going to keep Johns Pass Village looking like Johns Pass Village. The encouragement to build a roof and then have decorative above is in keeping with the vibe of Johns Pass. Not only did the Planning Commission vote unanimously on this, Forward Penellis has already reviewed it and they've given their blessing on it. I think that it's time for us to move forward. It doesn't mean that we can't make a recommendation or someone here can't recommend a change to the verbiage, but I feel like it's time to vote and move this and let's get going with Johns Pass so that we can ensure the integrity of the village. And until we vote on these items, we will not be able to do that.
Ms. Mayor, I, I would have felt more comfortable if we had some sort of a, some sort of a section as we see it there. And it's really easy, we, I'm sure Marcy knows what the flood zone is in Johns Pass. So, you know, show the ground and show the base flood elevation and four feet above that will be the design flood elevation. And then the height from there would be to the eve height. And then add another dimension from the eve height to the ground. So if, if, you know.
I think we have that. We have that, yes, we do have that.
That was at the last workshop.
Yes, we do have that.
It's not included in tonight's packet.
I've seen that.
I don't know, was this shared with the Planning Commission?
Yes, it was.
Is it in this packet?
In the.
I'm sorry.
It's basically shown in your drawings here from the, what is it, from Tampa Bay? In a different, it's not as pronounced, as defined as Marcy's drawing. Marcy's drawing was perfect. But I'm, I'm still, I'm, I'm not ready to vote on anything until we, we understand this, that, you know, the, the max FAR is 2.0. Yet we're going to approve 55 feet. And that realistically is twenty feet taller than the highest eve that we have in John's Pass Village right now. Not, not the parking garage, the highest eve walking through John's Pass. When we did our tour, we measured all the eaves that we could find that were high, and we just made the announcement that it was forty-four feet above grade, which we determined is roughly thirty-four feet above BFE. So to have buildings that are twenty-foot taller, I can't vote for that, I'm sorry. If I suggest that, you know, if, if we're divided on it, we need, that means we need more discussion on it. I'm not, I'm not ready to, to do that. I, I would, you know, if a hotel is, is, is built, that's great. Like my point before, let's get into agreement where, I'm, I'm looking at older documents that we, I mean, this discussion's been going on for decades. And they were basically in the same discussion about the height and what we want at John's Pass Village and the parking, parking being an issue. So if we require a hotel that goes in to have onsite parking, well, then it doesn't make any, it's not feasible for a developer to, to have first floor commercial, second floor parking, and third floor as temporary lodging. I get that. So it needs to be worked in concert coordination with the city, so the city actually benefits from the parking. And the developer can, can build first floor commercial and, and at least two levels of accommodations. A lot, I mean, that, to me, I mean, I'm, I'm not a developer, I don't, I don't know the math, but that seems more reasonable and would retain the feel of the village, in my humble opinion.
The FAR is dictated from what was agreed on with Forward Pinellas, correct?
Correct, yeah, this is what they approved. They said it was a neighborhood center even back in the day with the master plan, they called it a neighborhood center. I mean, that FAR is what, I, I mean, with alternative temporary lodging use standards, you could get up, if you have enough land, you could get up to a three, but you do have to include the parking structure. But, I mean, we've looked at other activity centers in the county from Dunedin to Gulfport, like all, all over the place. So, I mean, these FARs are pretty similar to like what you'd see there, or, or even like Dunedin, we looked at some of the newer mixed-use stuff there, and it's, it's pretty similar.
And just to clarify, the different zoning areas fall under different FARs, different heights, and your FAR and your height are tied together.
Yes.
Based on the size of your property. So what might, would make it, I think, confusing to some people is if the, it says you can be ten feet tall, okay, that's what the code says, but if you only have a quarter of an acre to meet the FAR that's allowed, you can only be six feet tall. I'm just using arbitrary numbers as a, as a guide, right? So when you start thinking about height and FAR, it's, it's not that simple because what you're reading all has to be calculated together to determine what somebody really can get based on the size of the property. Just because the code says you can go X amount of feet tall doesn't mean you can get that if you don't have enough land and you can't meet the floor area ratio, correct? Am I, am I right in that?
That's correct.
And, and even that, with our requirements, you have to make it look like separate buildings. So you, 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 so something like the Cambria that you could build in Town Center, you wouldn't be allowed to build that down in John's Pass because it would not meet these requirements. So, I, I mean, it, it's kind of tough. That's what I, I mean, it's tough to kind of imagine what could be built because it's so much different than what we have currently in our code, or what's currently been built like up here in Town Center. So it, it, I guess it's, and even back then with the master plan, it, it kind of, like, people don't really like the unknown, but, I mean, sometimes you got to move forward at some point because the problem is like with previously how we've done it with either, we, back in the day, we did variances, and we got, then we adopted, allowed for PDs, and we just kind of had just random development that wasn't really consist, looking consistent. Sometimes it didn't even meet like a, the right density, intensity, but like having those bad, like kind of inconsistent outcomes, like, like, we, we don't want to, like, ever go back to that and want to move forward from that. So the visuals are, are pretty, pretty basic, just to kind of just show, like, I think that's what's kind of hard. It, it, these are very basic visuals, just to show kind of how these regulations look, but in the most basic sense. Like, these aren't like super detailed ar- architecture drawings. It's just basically to show how the setbacks work, how the height works. And, and basically, they even get to, in the, so in the traditional village, you can't build large hotels, and that's a large part of John's Pass. And then the commercial core, you can't build large hotels either because of the height, height limits. At the end of the day, you can only get five stories from grade or four stories over one floor commercially. You have the Veranda area, and it's just, and it has to look like separate buildings. So, I, I mean, it, it's not perfect, but it, it's a big improvement over what happened in Town Center up here, so.
Mayor, I'd like to just say, based on the planning commission's recommendations, all of the resident meetings I attended, the multiple meetings I've had with our, with our staff, and the fact that I think the next five ordinances hinge on this.
Yes.
Am I correct in that?
Maybe the next three.
Okay, next three, hinge on it, right, right. But I understand that one might feel passionate about a specific thing. Perhaps we could find a, a motion that includes a, a small change to one section if there's something specifically. But I think to not vote on this, I don't think that's an efficient, a good use of our time, and I, I think it ignores the recommendations of the people who came before us, that we, you know, we were at the top of that pyramid. A lot happened before it got here. Certainly, I understand there might be, want, want to tweak it, but let's tweak it now and move on, I think. If it's, there's just a, an, an FAR, some kind of a statistic you want to change by a couple of numbers, let's make that motion. But I, I'd be in favor of moving forward with this.
Um, to, to clarify, I'm not chang, I'm not asking to change the far, I'm just, I can't visualize a building that's twenty-foot taller than any existing structure in the area. I'm just having, I'm having a hard time trying to figure that out. If it could be built with a two-point-o far, I, I'm just having a hard time figuring it out.
I think Marcy has something to put in.
So FAR is for resi- retail, and when it comes to hotels, let's say, do you use units per acre? And FAR?
Yes.
So FAR controls the units per acre?
You would do the floor area ratio and the, and the density of the units per acre, so it's an all-inclusive.
And the FAR and the units per acre, they are basically imposed to us by the county. They regulate density, intensity.
Yes, and that, these, the floor area ratio as well as the densities, those were approved earlier in the year, and I think, I mean, some of them were approved in twenty-twenty-three, but through the activity center designation.
Well, we can't change the FAR, we can't change the units per acre, so the designers, I think, would have to be very careful in how they designed the project to, to, to fit the site.
Correct.
So I, I must say that I, after seeing the height, I, I feel more comfortable with that. I, I just don't think we can increase the FAR to, and I understand Commissioner Kerr, he's, he's trying to be practical in, in visualizing, how could you, for instance, have a piece of land and hundred percent of it is, let's say, a commercial, and then you can only build two, two floors? That's your FAR, two floors entirely. I, I get that, but that's a challenge that the designers would have to deal with.
It's not a change we can make.
No, it's the county regulated it.
Any further comment? So do we have a motion?
I move that we approve ordinance twenty-two-four-oh-nine, appendix D, John's Pass Village Activity Center Development Standards.
Do we have a second?
Second.
City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Vice Mayor Tagliarini?
Yes.
Commissioner Gavalli?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner McGeehan?
Yes.
Mayor Brooks?
Yes.
The motion carried five to zero.
Next on the agenda is ordinance twenty-two-four-dash-ten, C-one, refer to appendix D. I will hand this over to the city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. This is ordinance twenty-two-four-dash-ten, an ordinance of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending chapter one-ten zoning, article five districts, division five, C-one tourist commercial of the city's land development code to rename it as C-one John's Pass Village Activity Center, providing further information on the purpose and intent of the John's Pass Village Activity Center District, replacing the development standards set forth in section one-ten-dash-two-fifty-seven through one-ten-dash-two-sixty-five with the development standards set forth in appendix D, John's Pass Village Activity Center Development Standards, providing for conflict codification and severability and providing for an effective date. That was the first screening ordinance twenty-two-four-dash-ten by title only.
Okay, ordinance twenty-two-four-dash-ten refers to the John's Pass Village Activity Center. So renaming that C-one zoning district from tourist commercial to John's Pass Village Activity Center, and then referring to that appendix D that we just discussed in the previous ordinance. And then removing the rest of the design and development standards in that section. This one's pretty straightforward, just referring back to that appendix D, or anything that's a zone, C-one.
Are you done, Ginny?
Yes, that's it.
Do we have any public comment?
Good evening. Chuck Dillon, five-twenty-nine, Lillian. We beat these people up down the other sides, and basically, all of this is, it's already been approved. It's been approved so many times. And Ray, I understand your thoughts here and everything, but yet, we ate them up in the planning committee, and we up one side and down the other, and that's where we kind of got to this. But to the extent of, it's already been pre-approved. I mean, you know, it's been to how many meetings? It's been to various things there, and we had a long, long meeting with this. And, and like, was said, like Emery said, we approved it. I mean, you know, and we went up one side of them and down the other. So, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any additional public comment? Commission?
No comment here.
With no comments, do we have a motion?
A move that we approve ordinance twenty-two-four-ten, amending C-one to refer to appendix D.
Do we have a second?
A second.
City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Vice Mayor Tagliarini?
Yes.
Commissioner McGeehan?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner McGavalli?
Yes.
Mayor Brooks?
Yes.
The motion carried five to zero.
The next item on our agenda is ordinance twenty-two-four-dash-eleven, rezone John's Pass Village Activity Center area to C-one John's Pass Village Activity Center zoning district, and I will hand this over to the city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a quasi-juicial hearing, so I'm going to read the ordinance by title only, and then we'll go through the process. So this is ordinance twenty-two-four-dash-eleven, an ordinance of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, rezoning certain real property from C-one John's Pass Village Activity Center, C-two John's Pass Marine Commercial, C-three Retail Commercial, C-four Marine Commercial, PD Plan Development, and R-three Medium Density Multi-Family Residential Zoning Districts to C-one John's Pass Village Activity Center for the area as set forth in the accompanying legal description and the parcel identification numbers listed in exhibit A attached here to, and hereby made a part of this ordinance, providing for future revitalization and development within the Activity Center category to be consistent with and pursuant to the procedures, guidelines, and standards of the John's Pass Village Activity Center Plan as adopted by ordinance twenty-two-three-dash-zero-one, and providing for an effective date hereof. That was a reading of ordinance twenty-two-four-dash-eleven by title only. Give you the summary of this, obviously, after reading the title, this is an ordinance that rezones the entire John's Pass Village Activity Center to C-one John's Pass Village Activity Center Zoning District. The parties in this case, we did receive one notice of intent from Ms. Berman, she's in the audience, and so we have one affected party, and we also have, obviously, the city as the applicant. So the order of presentation would be the city presenting first, and then the, and then Ms. Berman, if she has anything that she wants to add. I want to read the quasi-juicial proceeding here, procedures. This is a quasi-juicial proceeding where the Board of Commissioners acts in a quasi-juicial rather than a legislative capacity at this hearing. It is not the Board's function to make law, but rather to apply law that has already been established. In this hearing, the Board is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing, and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the Code of Ordinances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The Board may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues. If the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at this hearing demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established in the Code of Ordinances, then the Board is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent, substantial, and relevance, relevant evidence at this hearing demonstrates that the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the Code of Ordinances, then the Board is required by law to find against the applicant. Again, the applicant is the city. Anyone that's going to speak on this particular matter, if you could stand up, raise your right hand and be sworn under oath? Anyone that's going to speak on this? Ms. Berman, are you going to speak? Okay, if you are, you're going to stand up, raise your right hand? Ms. Berman, you need to stand up, raise your right hand? Okay? You swear that the testimony you're about to give today is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Okay, thank you. Okay, so Mayor, we will have city staff go ahead and make this presentation.
All right, so this one is also pretty straightforward, based on what we were just discussing in the last two ordinances. Essentially, it is rezoning this entire area that is outlined in black to the new C-one zoning district, the John's Pass Village Activity Center zoning district. And then the character districts are defined in that appendix D that we discussed in the ordinance twenty-two-four-dash-zero-nine. That is really all I have.
Any questions of city staff? No?
Yes, I have one question.
Okay.
The property, so to the, I guess, to the west of Gulf Boulevard, the zoning goes to the CCC line?
Yes, but on the future land use map, that is a preservation. So when the county, Forward Pinellas has our GIS stuff for the shape file, so they helped made that, make the updated map, they, and when they overlay the zoning, they only, they did it over the Activity Center, which was done along the CCCL line. I, I don't know the history of why it was zoned over the preservation area. At some point, we might want to rezone that to something else that doesn't, but that is just kind of a weird, weird little But that is just kind of a weird, weird little, um, I guess, quirk on the map that, that, but that's what it, it's basically fully overlaid over what was changed to Activity Center back in March.
Anything that's developable. So the CCCL is right along this line. We see that in a lot of different, um, communities as well, just looking up and down the beaches. Um, the zoning map and then the future land use map sometimes isn't right on that line. So, like Andrew said, that is something that we've talked about possibly doing in the future.
So where the, let's say, light brown is, so what's the zoning there? Is that P?
Uh, this is R three, everything that's, that's brown. And then this is our, this is the park, the city park.
So you'd like to leave the R three, even though it's waterwards of CCC line? You still like to leave that at R three, as R three?
And there's no density on it because, like Andrew stated before, it has a land use of preservation underneath it. And then that area, you can't build on that area as well.
Wouldn't you, wouldn't it make sense to change the zoning, like, together?
Well, this is the, this is the area of, of the Activity Center.
Would you come back later and change that zoning?
It's, it's all the way up and down the beach, where it's past the CCCL that the zoning is. So there are other areas, the entire city, that, yeah, eventually will be, be changed.
Okay.
Any other questions, city staff? Not seeing any, thank you. I forgot to ask, any, um, expertise communications or conflicts of interest that you needed to clear? Okay, so, now, Ms. Berman, now is your opportunity to go ahead and speak. Did you want to come up to the podium and address the, uh, city commission? Okay, just change your mind, thank you, appreciate that. All right, so it's now, um, is there anyone else in the public that didn't raise their hand before would like to speak on this agenda item? Not seeing any. Okay, so it's back to the commission mayor for consideration of approval of this ordinance.
Do we have a motion?
Uh, I move we approve ordinance twenty twenty-four dash eleven, rezone Johns Pass Village Activity Center to C one Johns Pass Village Activity Center zoning district.
Do we have a second?
Second.
City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Vice Mayor Taglerini?
Yes.
Commissioner Gavalli?
Yes.
Commissioner McGeehan?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Mayor Brooks?
Yes.
The motion carried five to zero.
Next on the agenda is ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twelve, amending C two to reserve, and I will hand this over to the city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. This is ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twelve, an ordinance of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, deleting division six Johns Pass Marine Commercial, sections one-ten dash two eighty-six through one-ten dash two ninety-five of chapter one-ten zoning, article five districts of the city's land development code, providing for conflict codification and severability and providing for an effective date. That was the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twelve by title only.
Do we have any public comment? With no public comment, commission?
Did you, I don't know if city staff had a presentation.
Oh, I'm sorry, I just skipped right over y'all. I'm in a hurry to get done, I guess.
It'll be really quick.
I apologize.
So this is pretty straightforward, too. Sorry about that. That's totally fine. Uh, so C two is this, is this boardwalk area. So this, like, hot pink area on the map. Uh, since this would be changed to the C one zoning district, there's no need for that C two zoning district anymore, so it's removing all the development standards within C two and then putting everything on reserve.
Okay, now do we have any public comment? With no public comment, commissioners, any comments?
I, I have one question. Um, since we are changing the zoning along the boardwalk from C two to C one, are we creating any non, um, non-conformity?
No, no, with the appendix D and the development standards, that really encompasses everything that's already built down there.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twelve, amending C two to reserve the first reading and public hearing.
Do we have a second?
Second.
City Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner McGeehan?
Yes.
Commissioner Gavalli?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Taglerini?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Mayor Brooks?
Yes.
The motion carried five to zero.
Next on the agenda is ordinance twenty twenty-four dash three, C three to be consistent with MBTC SAP, and I will hand this over to the city attorney.
This is ordinance twenty twenty-four dash thirteen, an ordinance of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, mending chapter one-ten zoning, article five districts, division seven, C three Retail Commercial of the city's land development code, providing further information on definition, purpose, and intent, allowing townhouses as an allowed use, including open rooftop uses as a special exception use, including development standards that references density and intensity, height, floor area ratio, and a purpose-surface ratio regulations in the commercial core and transitional character districts from the Madeira Beach Town Center Special Area Plan, providing for conflict codification and severability and providing for an effective date. That was the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash thirteen by title only.
Okay, and this went to BOC Workshop, I believe, two months ago, a month or two months ago. Um, so, in essence, the Madeira Beach Town Center Special Area Plan, which is an activity center, it's very similar to the Johns Pass Village Activity Center. It was adopted back in two thousand seven to Activity Center, and then there were some updates, I believe, uh, twenty fourteen was the last update to the Special Area Plan. And so within the Activity Center, there are certain densities, intensities. We also saw height within the Special Area Plan for the Madeira Beach Town Center that were never brought into the land development regulations. So just what we did with Johns Pass Village, bringing those standards from our comprehensive plan as well as the countywide plan, and then bringing that into the land development regulations. That's, in essence, what we're doing in these next three ordinances. So first, we're touching the C three zoning district to be consistent with the Special Area Plan that was adopted, um, in two thousand nine and then amended in two thousand fourteen. So in the beginning is referencing the the RMU land use in the comprehensive plan as well as the Activity Center. Make this a little larger. It's very small. There we, make it a little bit larger. There we go. And the Activity Center Plan category in the countywide plan. And one addition is adding townhouses as an allowed use. Then also adding that open rooftop balconies and elevated terrace uses. If commercial use or accessible to more than one temporary lodging, vacation rental, or residential unit, that would have to go through the special exception use. So what we were just discussing in Johns Pass Village, that would have to go to the special magistrate. There would be a public hearing. Um, everybody within three hundred feet of that property would be notified. And then they would have to meet that ten criteria. And then building site area requirements, including the Activity Center, the Madeira Beach Town Center Activity Center, which is the PRMU, the intensity and, uh, what's density in this case? And then outlining the properties located in these different, um, comprehensive plan, future land use categories of the comprehensive plan. And within the Special Area Plan for the Madeira Beach Town Center, it also included the height, uh, which is measured a little bit differently than how we typically measure height in these districts. So the height is not changing, uh, for the areas in the commercial general or or residential office retail areas, but it's including that height that was in the Special Area Plan that was adopted back in oh nine and two thousand fourteen. So it's measured from, measured by stories from base flood elevation, and that's how it's written in the Special Area Plan. And this is very similar as well, just including the floor area ratio that was adopted in the Special Area Plan as well as the impervious surface ratio.
But Jenny, I'm sorry, so we are a bit inconsistent, right, when it comes to measuring height?
Yes, so typically, how we measure it is from the design flood elevation to the highest point of the building. Um, in the Johns Pass Village Activity Center, um, from public workshops and from input, it was asked to measure it from design flood elevation to the Eave line.
Base flood.
Design flood. So base flood plus the freeboard. And in here, I can show you the Special Area Plan document. So here are all the character districts that were approved back with Madeira Beach Town Center. In the development standards, you can see here, stories above BFE base flood elevation. So this doesn't have the height how we measure it typically. It just says the stories. So in ordinance twenty twenty-four dash thirteen, it's really bringing these standards that were approved back in two thousand nine and two thousand fourteen and bringing that into the land development regulations. And that's all I have.
Do we have any public comment? With no public comment, commissioners? Do we have a motion?
Uh, I move, uh, we pass ordinance twenty twenty-four dash thirteen, C three to be consistent with MBTC SAP, amends the C three Retail Commercial zoning district to reference parties within the PRMU future land use category and other minor updates, including townhouses as an allowed use and open rooftop uses as a special exception.
Do we have a second?
A second.
City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Vice Mayor Taglerini?
Yes.
Commissioner McGeehan?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Gavalli?
Yes.
Mayor Brooks?
Yes.
The motion carried five to zero.
Next item on our agenda is ordinance twenty twenty-four dash fourteen, C four to be consistent with MBTC SAP, and I will hand this over to our city attorney.
Mayor Commissioners, this is ordinance twenty twenty-four dash fourteen, an ordinance of the city of Madeira, Madeira Beach, Florida, mending chapter one-ten zoning, article five districts, division eight, C four Marine Commercial of the city's land development code, providing further information on definition, purpose, and intent, allowing townhouses as an allowed use, including open top, I'm sorry, open rooftop uses as a special exception use, including development standards that references density, intensity, height, floor area ratio, and impervious surface ratio regulations in the causeway character district from the Madeira Beach Town Center Special Area Plan, providing for conflict codification and severability and providing for an effective date. That was a reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash fourteen by title only.
Okay, I'll sound like I'm on repeat. So this is bringing every, all the development standards within those character districts that are within the C four zoning district over from the Special Area Plan and putting that into the land development regulations. And then the other two additions is the open rooftop balcony and elevated terrace uses. Um, if commercial or accessible to more than one temporary lodging, vacation rental, or residential unit, that would have to go through the special exception use process as well as allowing townhouses as a permitted use. Besides that, it looks very similar to the last ordinance that we just reviewed. I mean, just bringing over the design standards that were approved back in two thousand nine and two thousand fourteen into the land development regulations. Thank you.
Do we have any public comment? With no public comment, do we have any commission comments? I would like to just point out that each one of these has gone to Forward Pinellas and been approved by Forward Pinellas.
Yes, that's correct. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, do you have any comment?
Sorry, no.
That's okay. Um, so do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-four dash fifteen, R dash three to be consistent with MBTC, I'm sorry, fourteen, to be consistent with MBTC SAP.
A second.
City Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner McGeehan?
Yes.
Mayor Taglerini?
Yes.
Commissioner Gavalli?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr? Mayor Brooks?
Yes.
The motion carried five to zero.
Next on the agenda is ordinance twenty twenty-four dash fifteen, R three to be consistent with MBTC SAP. I will hand this over to the city attorney.
Mayor Commissioners, this is ordinance twenty twenty-four dash fifteen, an ordinance of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, mending chapter one-ten zoning, article five districts, division four, R three Medium Density Multi-Family Residential of the city's land development code, providing further information on definition, purpose, and intent, allowing townhouses as an allowed use, including open rooftop uses as a special exception use, including development standards that references density and intensity, height, floor area ratio, and impervious surface ratio regulations in the beachfront, causeway, and peninsula character districts from the Madeira Beach Town Center Special Area Plan, providing for conflict codification and severability and providing for an effective date. That was the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash fifteen by title only.
All right, and this is very similar to the last two, bringing over those development standards from the Special Area Plan that was approved and putting them in the land development regulations as well as allowing town homes, townhouses as permitted use, and then including that open rooftop balcony and elevated terrace use as a special exception use that would have to go through the special magistrate.
Do we have any public comment? With no public comment, commissioners, any comments? Do we have a motion?
I move we approve ordinance twenty twenty-four dash fifteen, R three to be consistent with MBTC SAP.
Do we have a second?
Second.
City Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Vice Mayor Taglerini?
Yes.
Commissioner Gavalli?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner McGeehan?
Yes.
Mayor Brooks?
Yes.
The motion carried five to zero.
Next on the agenda is ordinance twenty twenty-four dash sixteen, Fees and Collection Procedures Manual, fiscal year twenty twenty-four, update number two, first reading and public hearing, and I will hand this over to the city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. This is ordinance twenty twenty-four dash sixteen, an ordinance of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, adopting the Fees and Collection Procedures Manual, repealing ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero five, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. That was the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash sixteen by title only. Not sure if there's going to be a presentation.
I'm happy to, so I presented this at the last workshop, so you have in the agenda memo the four bullets outlining the, uh, updates to fees and development services, finance, fire, and marina. We typically do, uh, provide an update to our fees and collection manual at least once annually. Uh, we did one earlier this fiscal year relating to, uh, a specific fee in the building services. But this is the, uh, update that we presented to you in the workshop and, uh, hoping for your, uh, approval. workshop and, uh, hoping for your, uh, approval.
Do we have any public comment?
Chuck Dillon, five twenty nine. I'm not sure, well, we didn't see this, but I'm not sure whether or not with that increase, will some of this increase potentially go to the parking garage? Just a question.
Do we have any additional public comment? Commissioners?
So I did have a clear, or a question, or not a question, but a statement, um, just for the record, that there is a part of approving this, um, new fees and collection is actually a savings to people who are building. Um, we've removed some fees that go out for submitting plans and site plan, so I think that's notable, that there is no longer a fee for preliminary site, site plan, there's no longer fees for additional submittals of site plans. Um, I think that's wonderful. We reduced on the zoning and land development regulation interpretations fees and made it just one flat fee, no matter what, um, was coming, whether it was thirteen units or a single family fourplex. I think that was, uh, positive, hopefully, as seen by our residents that are doing building and submitting plans, and then, um, the raising of the parking to four dollars an hour. I thought that we did discuss that, uh, money would still go into the parking fund.
Yes.
Towards building our parking garage. And then, um, there was a short-term vacation rental inspection annually added for a hundred dollars. That is in keeping with other communities, my understanding, so. I thought that it was some good changes on our part for the community. Any other comments?
And also Mayor and Commissioner updating our marina slip rental fees or various fees in the marina operations that go into the marina, um, fund.
Any additional comments? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt the ordinance twenty twenty four dash sixteen, Fees and Collections Pre procedure manual, fiscal year twenty twenty four, update number two.
Do we have a second?
Second.
City clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Kerr.
Yes.
Commissioner Gabayi.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Taglerini.
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn.
Yes.
Mayor Brooks.
Yes.
The motion carry five to zero.
Next on the agenda is ordinance twenty twenty four dash seventeen, Business Tax Receipt Fee Update, and I will pass this over to the city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. This is ordinance twenty twenty four dash seventeen. In ordinance of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending chapter sixty two taxation, article two, local business tax, section sixty two dash sixty, local business tax schedule of the city's code of ordinances to increase the levy of the local business tax fees by five percent, providing for conflict, codification, and severability, and providing for an effective date. That was the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty four dash seventeen by title only. And Jenny, are you handling this one?
Yes, I am. Um, our business tax receipts, BTRs, have not been updated since, uh, twenty fourteen, and we are allowed to increase that five percent every other year. Uh, so this is just an increase by five percent across the board on all the BTRs.
Do we have any public comment? With no public comment, commissioners, any comments? I just want to state for the record that these fees that are collected do go into the general fund. So they are not allocated towards any specific spending but our general fund. Do we have a motion?
I move the approval of ordinance twenty twenty four dash seventeen.
And a second?
A second.
City clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Vice Mayor Taglerini.
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Gabayi.
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr.
Yes.
Mayor Brooks.
Yes.
The motion carry five to zero.
Having no unfinished business, we will move right into new business. The first item is resolution twenty twenty four dash oh four, adoption of section one twenty five, the cafeteria plan, and I believe I will hand this over to our, Andrew?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and read the resolution by title first. Um, so this is resolution twenty twenty four dash zero four, resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, adopting a section one twenty five cafeteria plan, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. That was reading a resolution twenty twenty four dash zero four by title only.
So as I mentioned in our workshop, this just formally memorializes a plan document, uh, for health and other ancillary benefits for our employees to ensure compliance with IRC Internal Revenue Code, section one twenty five. So that's the, the purpose of this, asking for your approval.
Do we have any public comment? No public comment, commissioners?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty four dash zero four, adoption of section one twenty five cafeteria plan.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
City clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Gabayi.
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr.
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Taglerini.
Yes.
Mayor Brooks.
Yes.
The motion carry five to zero.
Next item on the agenda is resolution twenty twenty four dash oh five, Holiday Haphthon Road Closure. I will hand this to the city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. This is resolution twenty twenty four dash zero five, a resolution of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, establishing Sunday, December twenty second, twenty twenty four, Sunday, December twenty first, twenty twenty five, Sunday, December twentieth, my birthday, twenty twenty six, Sunday, December nineteenth, twenty twenty seven, Sunday, December seventeenth, twenty twenty eight, as the dates for the annual Florida Gulf Beaches Holiday Haphthon, starting in Madeira Beach adjacent to City Hall, south of Madeira Way, west of Gulf Boulevard, heading north in the northbound lanes of Gulf Boulevard to Indian Shores, allowing temporary road restrictions to be created between six AM and nine AM, to be field adjusted as necessary by the Pinellas County Sheriff's Office, authorizing the city manager to sign the Florida Department of Transportation applications provided by the race director for temporary closing of a state road, providing for reading by title only and providing for an effective date. That was reading resolution twenty twenty four dash zero five by title only, and the birthday comment is not in the title.
All right. Um, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Uh, very simply put, this is, uh, I believe the fourth time that we have done this for this organization. Um, as stated in there, they start here in our parking lot, um, drop off runners typically, they hug the right lane, run north, and they end up at a park in Largo. Uh, they're essentially asking for us to close the road or allow for them to close the road. We don't, we this is all the work we do is this. He needs it for future sponsor, uh, securals and all that stuff. So, um, they literally, they drop off, they go, he cleans up, and they leave. Uh, any, any additional stuff that they leave on site, uh, port, they use portable restrooms that they put in the Windexy parking lot, they park in Windexy's parking lot. There's really no heavy lift for the city. It's just, uh, we're a starting point. Everybody gets to come see City Hall and run. So that's the summation of that.
Thank you, Jay. Do we have any public comment? With no comments, do we have a motion?
I make a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty four dash zero five, the Holiday Haphthon Road Closure.
Do we have a second?
A second.
City clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner McGinn.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Taglerini.
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr.
Yes.
Commissioner Gabayi.
Yes.
Mayor Brooks.
Yes.
The motion carry five to zero.
Next on the agenda is the appointments for the Civil Service Commission. City attorney?
So this, um, is an agenda item to fill a vacancy position for the, um, Civil Service Commission, which has a partial term expiring on October thirtieth, twenty twenty six, and also to address Mr. Tilka's, um, term, which expires on October thirtieth, twenty twenty four. The recommendation for the Board of Commissioners is as follows. Uh, number one, appoint James Michael Paul to serve as a member of the Civil Service Commission for a partial term expiring October thirtieth, twenty twenty six. And number two, appoint Paul Tilka to serve as a member of the Civil Service Commission for a new term expiring on October thirtieth, twenty twenty seven. Um, those were the only two applicants. There are no other, um, applicants for these positions.
Are either one of them here tonight?
Yeah.
Do we have any public comment?
I had asked, the, um, applicants reached out. Paul Tilka was not, not able to attend, and the applicant had litigation today, so, uh, he was not able to attend today.
Commission?
I'm not, I'm not clear. Are there two positions available or just one?
There's three.
Two.
Oh.
It's two for this one, and there's three for the next agenda item.
Okay.
Okay, so, I mean.
But, yeah, the Civil Service Commission has one vacancy that has been vacant for a while, and then two that are expiring October of this year.
Got it. Thanks.
So we're gonna fill the vacancy. Mr. Tilka's requesting to be reappointed. Uh, Ms. Ponte is not going to be reappoint, has requested to not be reappointed, so we will have one vacancy after this. Yes.
Okay. Thanks, just needed that clarification. I can speak on behalf, uh, I mean, in favor of Mr. Tilka. I know him very well. He's very, uh, committed to the, the committee, makes, uh, he's a, he's a, a, a good addition to the, to the, uh, committee.
So, um, city attorney, since the recommendation is for the board to appoint Mr. Paul and Mr. Tilka, do we need to just have a motion to move forward with that?
Yeah, I would just suggest move staff recommendation, and that would encompass those two items that I just mentioned, items one and two, which is Mr. Paul and Mr. Tilka.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the staff recommendations for a part, for appointing, uh, James Michael Paul and Paul Tilka to serve on the Civil Service Commission.
Do we have a second?
A second.
City clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Kerr.
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Taglerini.
Yes.
Gabayi.
Yes.
Mayor Brooks.
Yes.
The motion carry five to zero.
Next on the agenda is appointments to the Planning Commission. City attorney?
Yes, Mr., uh, Ms., Ms. Mayor, the, um, the, oh, did you, did you want to handle this, Clara?
No, I have ballots.
Oh, you have the ballots, okay.
Our proposal requires ballots.
All right, let me just go over then. The Planning Commission has, um, three, uh, members that need to have, uh, you, that you need to address tonight. One position is currently vacant. One position is currently held by Mr. Connolly, which is going to expire on September thirtieth, twenty twenty four, and one is for Mr. John Mayer. Um, it also going to expire on September thirtieth, twenty twenty four, but you have five applicants. Of course, Mr. Connolly and Mr. Mayor. Um, and then you also have three additional that you have in your pa, packet, Mark Cloud, Whitney Richardson, and Randall Keys. The recommendation of staff is, is that the Board of Commissioners choose three of the five applicants to serve on the Planning Commission. One of those applicants will fill the partial term expiring September thirtieth, twenty twenty five, which is currently vacant, and then two applicants for the term expiring on, uh, September thirtieth, twenty twenty seven. That's Mr. Connolly's position and Mr. Mayor's position.
Right.
And you can do that, and, um, you've provided a ballot, is that what you're saying, Clara?
Correct.
Okay. And then, so I guess you can submit the ballot? And did you want to give any further direction on that?
Well, if they're gonna reappoint, if the board is gonna reappoint, chooses to reappoint the two to the, um, the expiring terms that are current members, I mean, you can vote on that. I mean, and we can do a ballot on the three.
Is anyone here to speak on their behalf? Are any of the applicants here besides John?
All three, three of the five.
Okay, maybe we just have each one of the applicants step forward and, uh, tell us anything that they want. That, that would be helpful. They don't have to, obviously.
No.
Okay.
John Connolly, Normandy Road. Um, I've served on a planning board for like two and a half years. I enjoy it greatly. Um, looking forward to doing it again. Thanks.
Good evening. My name is Whitney Duñez Richardson, and it's nice to see all of our faces in the same room. I have no experience on a planning committee before, but I do know that I'm young. I am the next generation that is coming up into Madeira Beach, so having someone with fresh ideas and being able to bring something to the table and contribute to the community is very important to me. I live on West Parsley. Thank you.
My name's Randall Keys. I, I have lived on one hundred and forty-fifth Avenue since nineteen eighty-five. I worked at the, excuse me, the Madeira Beach Post Office from nineteen seventy-five to nineteen seventy-nine while I lived in Reddington Beach, right down the road from the Fort Knox Lounge, and then, uh, moved here permanently in nineteen eighty-five and worked here from nineteen eighty-five to two thousand eight, when I retired. Um, I used to fish when I was a kid with my grandparents off the very old Johns Pass Bridge from nineteen fifty-eight on. We used to, that was our, our regularly Friday and Saturday night. I'm intimately aware of the structure of Madeira Beach and also a lot of the history of Madeira Beach. Um, I think I could serve on the Planning Commission and do a good job.
Thank you. I have one comment. Um, one of the applicants reached out to me, uh, Mark Cloud. He was unable to be here. He and his wife had already scheduled a trip out of the country, but, um, I did want to say on his behalf for him, he's very interested in serving on the Planning Commission. Um, he is, to note his qualifications, he is a retired engineer, um, and I just wanted to let everyone know that's why he's not here tonight.
So just to be clear, Clara, this ballot that you have is, is to fill the vacant position, correct? This is one of your work sending out right now? Okay.
I've listed all the applicant on there.
So are we to select three?
So the bottom line is, is you have three positions open, and you need to fill three. Um, you have missed, you have two that are currently on the board. So the answer is yes. You're gonna need to pick three out of the five.
Can we ask any questions to the candidates that are here? Mr. Keys, are you able to answer a question for me?
Can you stand up here, Mr. Keys?
Oh, thank you.
There's the microphone there. Okay, that's good.
Um, are you available for daytime meetings and evening meetings? Both yes and no are checked.
Um, I'm available for both meetings, daytime or evening.
Okay, but on that, on the application, we have, all four boxes are checked.
Um.
I'm sure that was, uh, in error, but, um, I want to get a clarification on that.
I don't know how that happened. Because I could make, I could make any of them. I also wanted to add, I was, uh, I've been a licensed, uh, real estate salesperson since, uh, nineteen eighty-seven, and also hold a hundred ton captain's license since nineteen eighty-seven.
Clara, are there? Clara, are there names on each one of these ballots, the Commissioners?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I see how you did it. Okay. Got it. I see it now. Okay. All right. So Mayor, now we just, you'd fill out, pick three of the five. And then, once you're done with your ballot, the City Clerk will pick them up and calculate them and give you who your Planning Commission members are.
I have a question, real quick, for Whitney.
I'm sorry, my microphone.
You don't have to come up here. You can just grab that mic if you want.
Oh, okay, so.
You're a big advocate of a playground near or around 140th Avenue, right?
I am.
And you have a, you host a monthly Moms event, and how many generally monthly do, how many people are in attendance to that?
Right now, we have eight Moms.
Eight Moms, okay, that's fantastic. That, I just wanted to go over that one more time. Actually, I think that's a great idea for the community. Instead of coming all the way here, you know, 140th Avenue's a nice spot also. Okay, thank you.
Mayor, may I ask you a question? Any of the Board members, is this, do they have to be present here tonight to be?
No, no.
Okay, just wondering.
I'll read the selection from each Commission member. Mayor Brooks, Mark Cloud, John Meeger, John Connolly. Vice Mayor Taglerini, Mark Cloud, John Meeger, John Connolly. Commissioner Kerr, Mark Cloud, Randall Keys, John Meeger. Commissioner McGinn, Whitney Richardson, Randall Keys, John Connolly. Commissioner Gabay, Mark Cloud, John Meeger, and John Connolly. There were four votes for Mark Cloud, one for Whitney Richardson. Randall Keys is two, John Meeger is four, and John Connolly is four. So the three applicants with the highest selection, the votes, is Mark Cloud, John Meeger, and John McConley.
Thank you, City Clerk.
You're welcome.
And thank you to everyone who did their application and came tonight. Moving on, the next item on the agenda is contract approval, RFP 2024-06, City Facility Cleaning Services. And I believe Megan is going to handle this for us.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. What I bring before you this evening is the contract approval for our new cleaning company. We discussed this at the previous workshop. American Janitorial, they interviewed with us back, and I don't, a month or so ago, maybe a little bit longer. The savings to the city will be upwards of $14,000 annually. So the annual cost is going to be $136,319.44. That will be broken up into several different departments. If you'd like me to go over that, I can. This contract is annual. It covers every city cleaning facility, so if you have any questions, come here.
Do we have any public comment? With no public comment, Commissioners? I just want to say, great job. You're saving us, this contract is lower than our previous contract and with greater expectations, so good job. Thank you very much. Do we have a motion?
I move that we approve the contract for American Janitorial, Inc. for a three-year term with two one-year optional renewals.
Do we have a second?
Second.
City Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Vice Mayor Taglerini?
Yes.
Commissioner Gabay?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Mayor Brooks?
Yes.
The motion carries five to zero.
The next item is agenda setting, August, for the August 28th, 2024 BOC Regular Workshop Meeting. Robin, before I hand this to you, I'd just like to make one comment. In our open comments at the beginning of the meeting, there was a request about short-term rentals, and we've been discussing adding things. I just wanted to go for on the record that that is an item that Robin is going to bring before us in September to discuss short-term rental enforcement and to discuss code enforcement on tall grass and derelict items in the yards, that sort of thing, so that the individual that came will know that that is something we're going to address down the road. Thank you.
Yeah, and Mayor, Commissioner, the items in the agenda packet, sorry, we lost the feed up here on the big screens, but looking at, I believe, and one, the first item, letter A, that we've discussed before, election candidates and where they can place signs. We utilize the, we have referred people to the Pinellas County Property Appraiser site, which does include all the lines, but anyway, discussion that's come from the Commission in the past. Discuss the Commission districts, flood insurance update, homestead issues. Discuss awarding a bid for awnings over the parking storage area at the fire station, Archibald Park bathroom project, the construction manager at risk for the North Reddington Fire Station. Looking for approval of the EMS agreements for fiscal '25. Seawall repair replacement, and also, as mentioned earlier, any alcohol noise and special events. The ordinances related to those three items. And certainly any other items that you would like to add.
Do we need to open this to public comment?
It's a lot, yes.
Robin, do we need to open this to public comment, or is this?
If you'd like, sure.
Do we have any public comment? No public comment. Commissioners, anything else you want to add? I think it looks good.
Mine's on there.
Yeah. Well, I know where all my stuff is, is in September.
Okay.
But that's good, too. Then we'll move on to reports and correspondence. Board of Commissioners, 2024 BOC meeting schedule?
Madam Mayor, I have one change to the Board of Commissioners' meeting schedule, where I have the upcoming candidate qualifying period. We're adding the mayor to that, the mayor position.
Yes. Thank you very much, Clara. Any comments? Public comments? Commissioners?
Are we, did we, are we still talking about the meeting schedule?
Yes.
Yeah. It just didn't sound like she said something in regards to the meetings. But if, but that's fine. Is any, are any dates changed since the last time we looked at this?
No.
Okay.
We would change them here.
Yeah.
Or look for your input as to any changes, but nothing has changed from the last time we looked at it.
She was addressing Vice Mayor, the candidate qualification period. It just says District 3 and District 4. She's going to add mayor to that.
The mayor.
That's what she was saying.
Sorry, I was confused. Thank you.
That's okay. Any other comments? City Attorney?
I think I've spoken enough tonight. I'd be happy to answer any questions, though.
Thank you. City Clerk?
Well, on mine, I did add some 2002 history, and that was on Madeira Tomorrow Project, Madeira Beach Vision and Program, the citywide master plan when they worked on that, and there's a lot of good information in that. This is just the articles that had come out, and I have the whole program on that. The committee meeting, the minutes and all of that, if anybody would like to, me to send those to you.
Clara, when I sat with you, you were showing me the software where all of the history of Madeira Beach, all of our meetings and everything is being uploaded into. Could you remind me the name of that program?
That is Laserfish.
Laserfish.
That is one of the items we've got ready and everything. I checked with Laserfish. They've got all the build-out done. They're finishing the process now, and then Laura and I will be adding stuff in and seeing what it's going to look like. Then when we post it, it shouldn't be long. It should be by the end of the month or by the middle of next month. Then we're going to get feedback from everybody of how you go in and do some research on, you know, in the public portal and all.
And it'll be open to the public.
Yes, it will. Yes, ma'am.
So I wanted to just.
Yes, ma'am.
So when I sat with Clara's department, the Laserfish is pretty cool in that if you're interested in the history of Madeira Beach or you're interested in reading about things that have happened in the past or been approved or you want to go back and do, it's really going to be a fun place to go and read if you're so inclined. But a lot of neat history in our city that I think a lot of people know and a lot of people don't know. But it's, it is, there is a lot of very unique, quirky, fun things to read, and it will be available for the public.
Yes, it will be.
And what I've seen so far, it appears it'll be pretty user-friendly for searching. So it'll be, like I said, I think it's going to be really neat.
Yeah, and one good thing about it, the documents for each topic will be centralized.
Right.
So what we find and scan, we're trying to put them in the same category where you're not looking in different places. Of course, some items do reflect other areas, but we're trying to take all the project and the ad hoc meetings and all of that, they're going to be together. And it's very interesting, and like in the 70s, in the early 70s, that's where they did a lot of conversation about John's Past Village and how they got started with that and everything. And lots of, we've got the old designs and all, it's just wonderful stuff to read.
Lots of people have opinions and memories, and then there's the black and white articles and facts that go along with it. Not that people's memories aren't facts, but you have whatever, what people recall, and then you can go read how it was written about. I shouldn't say, because that doesn't necessarily mean it's facts.
That's correct, and the Board of Adjustments.
But it is really neat.
Yes.
The minutes of the meetings alone are.
Yes.
Yeah, and Mayor, to add to that, the Laserfish software really is, the purpose of it is for public usage, for the public to be able to research and any, the majority, thousands and thousands of pages of documents from meeting minutes to agendas to contracts, agreements, et cetera, to projects the city approved. It's really a wealth of where the meat of the city will be located. Again, thousands and thousands of pages and documents, very easy to search and to navigate through it. Many other cities use it, so it's essentially the repository of the city of Madeira Beach. In addition to all the historical, just about every document that we will be able to make public, and that would be almost every document we have essentially to the public.
Yes, and it's very interesting.
And it's a starting point, and you know, this is the first time using a program like this, so that I know, understand there may be some tweaks. And that's the reason I welcome feedback from staff, management, and the public, and, you know, because we can make tweaks and whatever. We want it to be a great program.
Right. I think it is. I think it's going to be pretty neat for residents to be able to do research and read history, so.
Madam Mayor, if I may, just want to bring up Tropical Storm Debbie, just real quick. Is that okay? I think we weathered the storm really, really well. My hat's off to our city manager. He was tirelessly all over the place. He was dedicated. He really did a wonderful job for our city. It was exciting. Luckily, nothing major happened, but we weathered the storm and.
And our Public Works Department, they deserve a huge shout out. They worked. Megan, how many days straight did Public Works work? Mm-hmm. 14 days straight without a day off.
And fire trucks all over the place.
We are very lucky that we have such an incredible staff in this city and the, between Public Works and the Fire Department and the Rec Department and every department in our, within our city that pulls together and works together. And I know that for Public Works, when we have a storm, it is especially taxing on them. Yes. Robin was sharing with me this week how, I believe it was the Saturday before the storm, the tents that were left on the beach, that had they not gone out and removed those tents, they were abandoned, broken, but they were left on the beach. Had they not gone out and removed those tents, they would have ended up in the water, in the Gulf, and that would be a real problem. So, I mean, when you see the Public Works Department out, whether they're cutting our grass or picking up our trash or working in our landscaping or they're just, they're cleaning the beach, somebody should say thank you because they definitely deserve it. They show up. When we're all at home, because it's raining hard, the Fire Department and Public Works are out there.
Yes.
And Robin is, not to discount our city manager, because he is amazing, seven days a week.
The trash, the trash pirates, the day before cleaned up the beach, so that was a good thing.
They're an amazing organization also. But, City Manager?
Well, that's, I was going to cover a little bit of the storm, but thank you for the comments and absolutely a gigantic thank you, obviously, to our Public Works staff and the Fire Department and the directors are in the back here, the Fire Chief Clint Belk and Public Works Director Megan Webber for their, obviously, leadership guidance and just keeping the city moving and responding as we needed. And of course, then the preparations and then the cleanup after, which fortunately, we did, as Commissioner Gobay said, fared quite well. We had some minor flooding. Of course, any flooding is not minor, too, if your house floods, even if you get. Of course, any flooding is not minor to, if your house floods, even if you get just a little bit of water inside. But it could have been a lot worse had the storm followed a different path. But, so we were fortunately spared from that. Of course, the winds did create a little bit of an issue at times and, and the heavy, heavy rain. I think we totaled a little bit over 12 inches of rain. So with all of the rain, with the push-pull of the moon on the water, I think we fared quite, quite well. Minimal erosion out on the sand, so the dunes, I think, did what they were supposed to. You can see a little bit of the, I forget the word. I, to me, I call it that it's like if somebody had a giant knife and cut the, the dune. And, but there's a specific word for that, I can't remember the word. But we didn't have very much of that out, particularly down at John's Pass Park. By Monday afternoon, excuse me, by Tuesday morning, for the most part, we were back to normal with just a little bit of water still receding at John's Pass Park Parking Lot. And of course, picking up literally hundreds and hundreds of palm fronds and other debris, tree landscaping debris as opposed to actual structured debris. Although, there's still little pieces of signs that we'll pick up here and there on the curb side of some of the streets. But overall, I think we fared well. Also, I mean, thanks to Pinellas County Emergency Management, they do quite a bit of the work in keeping everyone informed and holding the status updates on, on what's happening. And fortunately, wasn't overly, overly taxing. And thankfully, nobody had a video, there were no cameras, when I was out and a squall went by at Archibald Park and I had to quickly sprint back because it felt like somebody was shooting me with little pellets as the wind probably gusted up over 60 miles an hour. And people are probably like, why, why is that person standing out there? But everything worked out well.
I took your picture.
Well, yeah, well, that was a different one. This was the second, because I did run into Commissioner Gobay, it's Sunday evening, almost Sunday night. So, but this was on Monday morning. So again, thank you to all city staff and, I mean, they, again, we want to keep the city looking as best as it possibly can and obviously, keep it running day to day after. I do want to point out and just remind, we do have, we've been issuing through our media upcoming public meetings, Saturday, this coming Saturday, the 17th, at 11:00 a.m. And the public meetings that I'm going to mention are all here at City Hall in the Commission chambers. But this Saturday, to get input on, on a parking garage somewhere in and around John's Past Village of that. So eventually, the city proceeds, but we'd like to get public input on that. And that's this Saturday, the 17th, at 11:00 a.m. And then a second one on Wednesday, August the 21st, at 6:00 p.m. right here. Then also on Tuesday, August the 20th, another public meeting, the third one on our water safety swim zones and proposed, if we choose to proceed at some point with a lifeguard program. So we encourage residents, businesses, we even welcome visitors to come and provide some input on those three opportunities to, to just tell us what you think and what may or may not we, you would like to see. Then toward the end of the month, we do have Final Friday on August 30th. But two days prior, on Wednesday, August the 28th, a reminder, we will have our, the last public budget workshop prior to the required public hearings and readings of our ordinance for our budget for next year. So encourage people to come out. That meeting begins at 4:00 p.m. followed by the workshop on the 30th of August. And I think I've shared with all of you, I will be traveling out of the area. I'm taking my daughter back to her second year of college across the ocean. So I will be out from the 27th, returning on September the 4th. But you can still reach me via phone, text, email. Fortunately, they, great coverage over in the, the island. So if you have any questions or comments, we'll be updating the city manager's report as well that I typically would report. We'll be, you'll see a little bit of a update to that coming in the next couple of weeks. And then back to reporting, providing that report at either the workshops or the council regular, commission regular meetings. But they are on the city's website, by the way, the city manager's page. And encourage anybody, any questions, anybody listening or watching, please let us know. We are not, obviously, not everywhere all the time, although we try to be. But we do still encourage people to participate. This is your, this is our city, your government. We are here to provide the best, most effective, efficient services that we can. And our 85 employees, including the five of you, do a fabulous job every day. And we, but we still need input from folks, so please let us know anything needing attention. Of course, we do welcome all comments, concerns. We do appreciate any, any positive comments as well, which we do get from time to time. So we definitely appreciate that. And thank you to all five of you for the continued support. And lots happening and we'll start to see some more projects underway over the next few months. Thank you.
Thank you.
It is 8:34, we are adjourned.